Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present as we rise for a pledge of allegiance, please remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Yesterday, we lost a great man, Tony Martel. Not only a great loss to Madison, but in a way, a loss to our country and the world. Forty-one years ago, Tony's son TJ was losing his battle to leukemia. And TJ made just a very small request of his father. And that was to raise a million dollars for research so no one else will have to experience what I'm going through. And Tony, being a beautiful father, said, "Yes TJ, I will do that." And of course, he had no idea how that would happen, but he made that promise. And since that promise, the TJ Martel Foundation has raised nearly $300 million to fund research to find a cure for leukemia, cancer, and AIDS. We may never know how many lives have been saved through the work of the foundation and through Tony's promise, but he delivered to his son. Tony was a caring person, who was always ready to step up to help those in need, especially those in his beloved town of Madison. Tony greatly appreciated how Madison stepped up to support the foundation. Over the years, the walkathons and jazz concerts raised, Madison raised near $2 million to support the work of the foundation. And on a personal level, it was Tony who first called me mayor, and that was before I had earned the title. But it was an inspiration, because I knew if Tony Martel believed in you, you were on the right track. Tony is survived by his daughter Debbie. He lost his wife Vicki of 64 years this past February. Tony's passing will sit heavy on the hearts of those of us who knew him, and will be felt by those who never met him. I have requested that all Madison flags be flown at half-staff from today through the day of services. Please take a moment of silence and reflection for truly a great man, Tony Martel. Thank you. I have a motion for the executive minutes of October 24, 2016.
I'm moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
A motion for the regular minutes of October 24, 2016.
I'm moved.
Second. I did want to make one modification, and I don't find it in front of me. It was during the discussion on the electric rates, and...
Three of six.
So, Mr. Rowe provided his own analysis of the utility suggesting a 7% rate cut. I actually suggested that the minimum that we should be cutting rates was 7%.
So, we add minimum?
Yeah. I presented a whole range of solutions, the lowest one, I think, was 7%.
Thank you, we will correct. Any others for discussion? All in favor as corrected?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Thank you. Welcome all, hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. Great time with family. A few things, and over the last couple of weeks, about a week and a half ago, was the annual League of Municipalities Conference. And Madison hosted a panel, which we're able to share the great success of the Chief Executive Council for Madison, the impact it has made for our businesses and for our community, and also share the great town and gown relations we have with Drew. I want to thank Dennis Bone, who is the Director of the Feliciano Center for Entrepreneurship and also Madison resident, serving on the panel, along with Drew President, Mary Ann Benninger, and Christie Ty, who is Director of College Readiness for Junior Achievement. They've made the trip all the way down to Atlantic City to share Madison's great story. And also want to thank Jim Burnett for all the work in making the panel such a success. And on Saturday, the 19th, we had a little gathering at the Triangle at Hillcrest and Green Village to dedicate that triangle in memory of Larry Taber. The mini park was beautifully landscaped by Harry Pignataro of Cardinal Landscaping. Harry donated its design work, materials, and labor. It truly was a labor of love. The friends and neighbors of Larry shared their stories, and some very enjoyable stories of our good friend Larry Taber. And really, most importantly, shared how he would have appreciated this beautiful garden where people can gather and just sit on the bench and take in the flowers. Regrettably, Harry Pignataro had a last-minute conflict, so he was not able to attend, so hopefully I'll get him at our next council meeting to present him with a proclamation. And this past Friday, the rain moved out just in time, and the temperature was perfect for another incredible Santa Claus parade. The crowd was incredible, just from the center of town, it pretty much was curbed right up to our storefronts, packed solid. And then, as I stood on the platform looking out right before the lighting the tree, it would just seem to be a sea of people. Times Square on New Year's Eve has nothing on Waverly Place. And all that couldn't happen without the army of volunteers, including the DDC, that put on lights on our light poles to accent our reeds now. Of course, Mr. Christmas himself, Carmen Toto and his family, for all they do to make that happen. The borough staff, the extra time they got to get the town ready. And of course, the donors of our beautiful tree, firefighter Jack Dunn Jr. and his family. They were there to... So, as you see that tree, and if you see firefighter Dunn, thank him for owning that tree. And of course, got to thank Santa Claus, because he is very busy this time of year, but he finds a time to stay for the whole ceremony, lighting the tree, and to greet all the children. It was a great day. Reports from committees, utilities, Mr. Wolkowitz.
I have no report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Health, Mr. Cattinello.
I have no report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
I'm feeling guilty now I had a long report. Finance, Borough Clerk, Mr. Landrigan.
I got a short one. Okay. The borough is through 23 of the 24 pay periods in 2016, and so far, there are no issues. The Finance Department is already working on the 2017 budget. One of the first steps is calculating salaries by department, which involves reviewing union contracts for mandatory increases, confirming healthcare contributions, and the like. The next step in the 2017 budget process is for a capital, is a review of capital. Engineer Bob Vogel and CFO Jim Burnett plan on presenting the first draft of the five-year capital plan to council at the December 12 council meeting. And finally, the utility billing department is in the process of resequencing all 28 of the utility books. These books are what the meter readers carry around with them as they hand record with the meter readers. The task is being done in preparation for a new handheld meter reading, for the new handheld meter reading devices. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a report from the Fire Department. This past Sunday, November 27th, the Fire Department formally dedicated a bronze plaque honoring former chief of the Madison Fire Department, Tom Kieranen. Chief Kieranen passed away last year and was chief from 1989 to 1991. Chief Kieranen was in command of the devastating fire at Mead Hall on the campus of Drew University on August 24, 1989. As the holiday season comes upon us, the Fire Department would remind residents to use only UL-listed or other certified listed agencies' electrical cords and lighting products. For those who use a live Christmas tree for the holiday season, Fire Department recommends to check and water your tree daily. Residents are also reminded not to burn wrapping paper, Christmas trees, or reeds in their fireplace. This can possibly cause a chimney fire and damage to your home. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Media Affairs, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to add to your report. I was also at the League of Municipalities, and our town receives silver recertification from sustainable jerseys. I want to thank the Madison Environmental Commission and our Sustainability Committee for achieving that. It takes a lot of work. And I'd also like to thank Zach Ellis, our Recreation Director, who received a grant from Investors Bank for our AED training grant. And finally, from the seniors, they are taking a trip to the New York City Museum Mile on Tuesday, November 29th. Forty-four people have registered and will be dropped off at the Metropolitan Museum, where they may stay, but they also have the option of choosing one or more of the eight museums along Fifth Avenue. And they'll be, they have maps with locations, hours, admission, and lunch options, who are distributed at sign-up. And the cost of the bus transportation only is residents 25, non-residents 30. Upcoming trips for 2017 will include the Brandywine River Museum with its tours of the N.C. Wyeth House and Studio, the Andrew Wyeth Studio, and Kerners Farm. And they are also going to be going to the recently relocated Whitney Museum, Chelsea Market, and High Line. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, from Engineering, Roads, Cefeli &amp; Sons Construction completed striping activities on the Prospect Street project this past week. Second, the County of Morris will complete milling and paving of Shunpike Road in Madison this week. Third, the state made the 2017 local aid funding round available as of November 17th. Madison will be submitting an application for funding assistance of the Greenwood Ave reconstruction project before the February deadline. Plans and specifications for the Lewanaka Way Woodland Road intersection improvements produced for the County of Morris have been forwarded to the Borough of Madison. We expect construction on that intersection in 2017. For Buildings, the DPW Refueling Storage Expansion has been started with foundation work completed last week. The new tank will be delivered when the concrete slab is fully cured in about two weeks' time. And finally, from Engineering, a meeting with Public Service, Electric, and Gas has been scheduled for December 1st to continue recommendations on improved planning and coordination of road openings by the utility. And from the Public Works, Relief Collection, the Public Works teams are working on the final round of leaf collection for 2016. Please have all leaves curbside before the end of this week if you want to ensure they will be collected. The final yard waste pickups will also be coming up Wednesday, December 14th. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one other reminder, which I had in my notes but forgot to mention, our reorganization meeting is going to be on January 2nd, Monday, at 5:00 PM. And we'll be swearing in Pat Rowe and Maureen Burrow and recognizing Rob Cattinello for his six years of service to the borough. So, put that on your calendar, please. Communications and Petitions.
None received, Mayor.
Okay, we're on to the first of two invitations for discussion. This is the one that is limited to items on Agenda Discussion, which are none. So, you can comment on any resolutions that are listed on the Consent Agenda Resolutions. You may comment on other topics when we come to our second discussion, or if you're here to comment on any ordinances, we will have the scheduled hearings, and you can speak on those during the hearings. Anyone wishing to speak on any of the resolutions on the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Clerk, please read the statement on ordinances for hearing.
Ordinances were introduced by title and passed on first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on Monday, November 14, 2016. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting.
I call up ordinances for second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 64-2016, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $250,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for remediation at the rear of the Hartley Dodge Memorial.
I open the hearing for ordinance 64. Anyone wishing to comment on ordinance, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 64-2016.
A second.
Council Discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Cattinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 64-2016 adopted and finally passed, and I ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 65-2016, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 94 of the Borough Code entitled Electric Utility to amend the rules and regulations of the Electric Utility Department and set forth the regulations to establish an annual customer cost adjustment program.
I open the hearing on ordinance 65-2016, if anyone wishes a comment on this one. Please step up to lectern, state your name, your address, and write the same, and try to keep your comments to three minutes if possible. Right, welcome.
So, hello, my name is Ron Hendrickson. I'm a Madison resident. I've lived in the town for 12 years, and I have to say, we love being here in Madison. We enjoy it.
We need you to state your address also.
Oh, my address is 119 Green Avenue. I relocated from the West Coast to Madison, just because of a relocation from a job. That's what brought me here, and I have to say, I really enjoy the community. I have some comments and some concerns about the electric utility rates. If you recall, I was here about a year ago and presented to you an editorial I wrote for the Madison Eagle regarding the utility rates, and about some of the concerns I had then. And I was assured that those would be addressed after the election. I was also here this summer and talked about the Madison electric rates, when the Madison water rates were actually not rolled back to what they were in the past. And we talked about that, and so now I'm here to talk about the electric utility rates again. I'm a research scientist, so I apologize if I'm not as eloquent as English majors. I understand numbers pretty well. And when I was growing up in high school, I had a phenomenal physics teacher. And she said, "If you really want to understand something, you should read your utility bill." And I thought that was a little surprising at the time, and I actually took her up on that. And so, I think what she wanted me to understand was mathematics, physics, units, all of those kind of things. So, I have in front of me my gas bill from PSE&amp;G, which actually has all of the information for me as a PhD-level scientist to understand what I'm paying for and what services I'm receiving. Before coming here, I actually brought my Madison utility bill, and I have to say, I'm thoroughly disappointed in that, primarily because I have high-school-age students that are trying to get into AP Physics 5, so they can go on to college. And they know that you'll get zero credit if you have naked numbers. And what I see here in the Madison bill are actually naked numbers. So, we want to have our students be prepared to compete worldwide in science, technology, engineering. This would get you an F at Madison High School. An F. Okay, so, I went through this and tried to understand what I actually pay. It doesn't tell me. Doesn't tell me. That's a concern for me, trying to understand. It should be a concern for my children, as I'm trying to teach them to be engaged in their community. And I wrote this summer to the new website about the new bill, and I highlighted that consumption is not a unit. Okay? So, I would encourage you, if you haven't read the bill, to read it. And it doesn't allow anyone to actually calculate what they're spending for electricity. Okay? Now, I wrote to Madison and asked if they could fix this, and I was told, they can't, because they hired a computer company to do this, and they can't put that information in there. My son is going to Oxford in about three weeks. He was homeschooled here in Madison, and he can do this for you. In fact, I bet you, he can do that for you in a couple of weeks. So, if you need some help, I would encourage you to link in and tap in to the resources that you have in Madison, Madison, the town of Madison. Okay? If you want, I can get you someone who can fix this in a couple of weeks. Okay. But that's not why I came here to talk, and I know I only have three minutes, but I apologize. I think I have a lot to say here. I don't know what I'm paying for electricity. I'd actually have to read the editorial I wrote a year ago to tell me what I'm paying for my Madison electric rate. Could someone tell me what that is?
What I'll do is, after you have your comments, I'll have Jim address the structure of the bill and the rates for residents and...
So, the rates are really important, because the rates are actually fixed by the council, and they vote on them, they approve them, they fix the rates. And you probably hedge, based on market prices, what you pay for electricity. So, it doesn't fluctuate with the market, you hedge it. And I think if you have some really good, you know, economic-minded people here, they could actually beat the hedge, just like Southwest Airline did and clobbered when the fuel prices dropped. Or you can get on the backside of a hedge and lose a ton of money on that. So, that's what I'm looking to you to do, to make sure you do properly, right? But it's going to be a fixed price, and it's going to be based on what you charge and what you're paying to, you know, hedge the market. And I don't know what that is. But I do know that we're one of a few municipalities in the state of New Jersey who can actually charge what we want to our residents, and the residents are actually not allowed to opt out. They're not allowed to opt out. So, we're looking to you to make sure that it's in our best interest to buy these utility rates. Now, I'm seeing some crossed arms, so I might be ruffling a few feathers, so I don't want to do that. I do think that the people here do a phenomenal job taking care of our electric lines. My father was an electrician, I know how to wire houses, I know three-phase power. And we had a squirrel jump across a transformer across the street, and those guys were there on a Saturday to fix it, and that's phenomenal service. So, I think they're doing a great job, we want to keep them, they're doing great things, right? I just don't know what we pay. Now, Drew University does not pay property tax, but we do, right? And Drew University pays 11.29 cents per kilowatt hour, right? The market rates right now are 8.19 cents per kilowatt hour. And someone will here shortly tell me what I pay per kilowatt hour, which I can't determine from my bill, which is a problem, okay? So, I think it's fine to pay a little bit extra for the kind of services that we receive, we want that. The concern I have is I have two wonderful retired couples that live as my neighbors. They're on a fixed income, and when the water rates are very high, that's a huge impact on them. And when the electric rates are very high, that's a huge impact on them. They're actually worried about how long they leave their lights on and those kind of things. Now, for others, they probably don't really care. So, I think it's really important how we think about this, right? And how we think about what kind of surplus we're going to give back to the community, it's really important. And whether we're going to give the same surplus to the community, to my neighbors, or to Drew University, who's also my neighbor, right? But if my understanding is Drew, if they don't like the rate that we're charging them for electricity, they can opt out. We don't have that option. It's an important thing to think about. Now, when I look at this, when I read about what happened last week, the good discussion you had a couple of weeks ago, there's a very, very important question here that I think everyone should be concerned about. And it has to do with a line here that says that "Transfer of electric surplus to municipal budget for the tax relief, debt service, municipal operating support, and general capital improvements." That's everything. Now, if you can transfer everything out of utility into the general budget, there's really no control over the flow of money, and that's fine. I think what was being discussed at the council, which is a really important point, is, will the council commit to holding the transfer to the municipal budget at a fixed number? And I'm not sure if that's linked to whether this gets approved or not, and I think it should be. Because if you're not going to hold yourself accountable to a fixed number, there's no prioritization that's occurring, there's no long-range binding that's occurring. It's really a year-to-year kind of things. And for us that are raising our children and sending them off to college, we have to do that. And I would expect that for you as leaders of Madison, you would be doing a very similar thing. Okay. So, I have to say that I'm here to comment on whether or not I approve this, but I think the information I need in order to say up or down vote isn't clear to me. So, those are my comments, and I apologize for going over three minutes.
Thank you, Ron. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Tom?
I'm actually here, I think, to compliment the borough, the council, and Jim Burnett in terms of the model that you have adopted, I think, for the overview of managing the electric utility and its rates, and the rebate quotes to the council. I think it's been some work. I don't disagree in terms of some of the other comments that have been made, and there are some studies that have been done in terms of overall needs and the way that they apply out of the borough, and it would be worth maybe reviewing that with Jim, with you. I would like to add just one other comment, that I'd like to see this model be adopted, because we have, I think, two other situations where a similar approach can be used. We have a water utility, and the water utility has exactly the reverse situation, where our rates are by far the lowest in any jurisdiction in the state practically, when we looked at those rates. But I think you've got a model that I think sets forth how you should address those in terms of an overview. And the other one that I have, as I listen to some of the people that deal with the Joint Commission for Sanitary Services, I think it is equally applicable in terms of addressing those needs, because those are both sizable components of, for the services that we provide to the citizens.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close the hearing. Before we go to the motion, let's get Jim to the flexibility on the amount of information we can provide on our bills, and then if you could also share the residential rate.
Sure. Mr. Hendrickson, I don't think I caught that inquiry you had about being able to change the bill or not, because we can change the bill, and I think your suggestions are excellent. So, we'll work forward on that. That's something that our billing software company can and should do. It's kilowatt hours, which is a standardized measurement of what we're counting and collecting. Any electric meter counts that. Commercial meters also count demand as well. We've done a number of analyses that we've presented here on residential rates. We're probably going to be moving forward. I think Ray and I are going to be suggesting that we do a commercial rate analysis in the coming months, and compare our rates versus the industry around us. Eight cents is not a number that I have seen when you add in all the costs and expenses across the board for any of the local utilities that we're competing against or that serve in New Jersey. So, I don't know where that eight-cent number is coming from, but it may not include societal benefits, charges, taxes, and all sorts of other amounts that are all blended in and added into our bill, or not included in our bill because we don't charge them. Residential rates in the borough of Madison are 19.29 cents per kilowatt hour. Mr. Hendrickson mentioned that, am I saying that right? Mentioned that Drew and others are paying 11 cents, 12 cents. That's correct. But as we talked about at the last meeting, there's a demand charge, which is a different and additional charge, which all large commercial users get charged in utility, and it basically helps to pay for capacity. And that is a significant charge, can be upwards of 25% of their bill. So, I think that answers both the questions. In regards to this ordinance, I talked to Ben this afternoon. Mayor, if I could just talk just for a minute about the ordinance structure and a question that came up at the last council meeting from Mike Soriano. This ordinance does allow for flexibility on when the council decides they want that performance adjustment to occur. So, Mike had questions, "Why would you do it in January? Why don't you do it in March?" That can happen that way if council so decides to do that. So, you can have it, discuss it in February and March, have it start April 1, go from April 1 to March 31st of the following year. So, that's something that's very simple and can easily be done. So, I want to just make sure you understood that. This ordinance really gives us the flexibility to have this performance adjustment occur on the monthly electric bills for all the customers. Really, the details will come out when we do the analysis and when we talk about what surplus is available and how much council wants to give back to the customers. I think that's when we really get kind of into the details of how this works. This just really creates the mechanism to allow it to happen.
Thank you. I have a motion for the ordinance.
Yes, Mayor, I move ordinance 65-2016.
Second. Council Discussion. Rob?
Thank you. I'm sorry I missed the last meeting. Believe me, I would have rather been here than on a China Southern flight to, you know, to Singapore. Don't take China Southern if you're going to fly to Asia, is what I'm going to say. So, it's funny, because I was an electrical engineer too, back in the day, and I had to take a lot of physics. Now, they don't take as much physics, back then they did. And unit cancellation got me through 20 credits of physics, so it helps. But I'm not going to talk about the bill. As it pertains to this ordinance in particular, an annual electric customer cost adjustment program is hereby established as follows. CFO provide a written report to the governing body in January of the financial results of the electric... results of the electric utility for the preceding calendar year. I think that's a wonderful step. The report will include detailed accounting of all money inflows and outflows. Costs will include utility operational costs, employee compensation and benefits, transmission costs, capacity demand charges, commodity costs, physical plant and equipment charges, appropriations, et cetera. Operating reserve, contingency, transfers of electric surplus to municipal budget for tax relief, debt service, municipal operating support. So what's the difference between transfers of electric surplus to municipal budget for tax relief and municipal operating support?
Interchangeable.
I'm just curious.
Well, I mean, there's two things. Putting money into the municipal operating budget is money that'll be spent by the municipality where you won't have to raise funds. Putting money into tax relief is money that's dedicated directly to the reduction of taxes. So for example, a number of years ago, there was a law that was passed where schools, all the K-12s, if they have any surplus that's, I think, greater than 2%, is required under 17 S01 to go right to the budget as tax relief. We don't raise additional funds for taxes. So it's one and the same, about one's dedication to operating expenses, which will be spent, thereby not having to raise additional taxes. The other one would actually be money that's dedicated to reducing taxes on the municipal course of the budget.
Sounds kind of similar. Okay. And then, and general capital improvements, a minimum free balance of at least $1 million. So just if you would imagine entering into a contract with an employer or a supplier, considering that everything is sort of based on this, you know, this free cash reserve at the end of the year, and there are no restrictions on what can or cannot be counted for or against that. And then you take another $1 million. There, you know, there really is the potential that there, you know, that any sort of, anything can be cobbled into this to reduce the amount of relief that's given to the rate payer, whether it be commercial or residential. I know that, you know, if I was going to go work for a company and they put this contract in front of me, I don't think I would sign it. I don't think I would sign it if I was going to contract with a company to provide me services, because there's, it's, everything seems very fungible. So, you know, that's, I just, you know, I don't really see this as having a lot of teeth in the, toward the goal, pardon me, toward the goal of actually providing relief to the rate payers on a guaranteed basis, you know? So just pass that along. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There aren't guarantees, because it's a very flexible market situation. We know that from the past. So I don't want to promise something we can't deliver on if the performance of the utility doesn't perform like we want it to and create the surplus.
But how, but, so, okay, fair enough. But how do you measure performance of the utility, number one? Number two, as it pertains to all the work that we did in, you know, in funding ourselves and strategic planning, the only thing that we didn't do a strategic plan for was how to pay for everything that we want to spend. We did plenty of, we need to spend this much on capital, but there was never a strategic committee done, how are we going to pay for it? And number two, and I would recommend this, that the next strategic planning committee be devoted to how are we going to fund ourselves when the cost of electricity goes up, because it will. And it won't for three or four years. We're covered, right? We did a very good job hedging. But it will go up. And not to belabor the point about the difference between a normal distribution and a log-normal distribution, or even a chi-squared distribution. But right now, you know, when you're dealing with physical commodities, you're bounded at zero. Ben knows this very well, because he's an economist. And we are so close to zero, okay, that the probability of us, of say, natural gas, which is the driver of the electric cost, going from $3 to $1.50 is much less than the probability of it going from $3 to $4.50. And that will have a direct, that will have a direct impact on how the borough funds itself when you consider that 25% or 30% of the municipal budget is funded through surplus transfers. So, you know, the reason that I think there should be teeth to this is that we've got to wean ourselves off of that, I hate to say it, but Jones, we'll call it the electricity Jones. And sometimes the best way to do that is to kind of go cold turkey. Now, I'm not suggesting that we cut it to zero, but there really should be, to be fair to the residents, some sort of, you know, I believe, limit on the amount that you can transfer from the utilities for the operating budget. I think that the presentation done by Mr. Rowe at the October 26th or whatever council meeting showed, by using the borough numbers, that there is money available. And I just think that that would be better off long-term. So it's my opinion, you know? I promise you, one day rates will go up, you know, and it's time to prepare for that. And, you know, the time to prepare for famine is when you're feasting. So that's just, that's all I'm saying. I know you're going to vote for it. It's going to be five to one. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Before we go to, but just, one, we did have a conversation about the rate structure itself, and Jim already alluded to the fact that we're looking at commercial rates and doing a study on that. And the other is, as we go to smart meters, that we know in the next couple of years, we do need to look at the overall rate structure. And so this is a vehicle to make sure we don't put off the relief. Ben?
Yes, thank you. Little background, I've gotten more than knee-deep into this subject over the last couple of years. Beginning in around 1928, in a very official capacity, the borough determined that the purpose of the electric utility, besides providing electricity, was to generate a surplus that could be applied to the expenses of running this borough. And that was challenged once in court by a resident who soundly lost. We're very much within our legislative, whatever mandate, to do that. I don't disagree with Councilman Caden Alnello at the point that you can rely too much on a single source. And obviously, given the profitability, if I may put it in those terms, of the electric utility, we do have a pot of gold, as it were, to rely on when we need to. I would like to see us wean off it as well. I don't think going cold turkey is an option when you're running a municipality, because if indeed we were to set that number, that we are going to turn back as a performance adjustment at the end of the fiscal year to our residents, if we found ourselves doing that and having a shortfall as a result, then we go back to the situation that I recall all too well, starting in about 2008, where our residents had the joy of riding on some of the worst streets known to mankind. And what we subsequently found out was that what you can see is not, in fact, the worst case. It's what you couldn't see that was deteriorating as significantly. That was a big problem. The free balance part of this exercise is the weakest part. We have no data on which to determine what the experience has been in the electric utility over time in finding itself confronted with unforeseen events that are expensive to rectify. We just don't know. The $1 million is literally the finger in the air. It is a good guess. Over time, we may discover it's too little. I should hope that over time we'll discover it's too much. And I would also hope that the wisdom of future councils would be to carefully look at that number over time and decide whether or not to change it. I think the rest of this is very mechanical, which is the way it was intended. It'll be simple arithmetic, and at the end of the year, if things go the way they have been going, we should be able to turn back every year some kind of cost adjustment. When the cost of electricity spikes in the other direction, that may no longer be possible. But we will do everything we can, obviously, to continue this streak, as it were, of running the utility as efficiently as possible. The other thing I'd like to say is what this does, and a number of people have talked to me about this over the years, is it puts the utility more in the footing of a business rather than a department that somehow exists over there, and we don't really know all the financial aspects of what's going on. Now we will clearly know all the financial aspects of what is going on. And in an attempt to run it as a business, over time, I would hope it becomes more efficient, more cost-effective, more, if I may say, profitable, and less expensive, and what it provides becomes less expensive to our residents. But again, I would also like to see us generate revenue from other sources. I have puzzled over this. We've tried a few things. Some have been successful. I think this council is open to any productive suggestions and will consider any ideas very seriously if they have the potential to generate additional revenue from a currently untapped source. Thank you.
Just for the record, I'm not suggesting we go to zero. When I said cold turkey, it was just an allusion to, you know, picking a bad habit.
So I'm supporting this. As I've said last time, this was not my preferred option, but it's better than no money going back to the rate payers at all. I still think, though, the real, the moment the rubber's going to hit the road is when we sit down and come up with what are we going to consider the end-of-year free balance? How much do we want to transfer next year? And unless we're willing to hold the line where we are now, number one, we won't be weaning ourselves off the electric utility. Number two, I think the dividend, the rebate, the cut, whatever you want to call it, the cost adjuster, that the residents say will be much less than they should expect. As I said when I did the analysis, I felt the number should be in the 7% to 9% range. So I think it's really going to be incumbent on council next year as we do the budget to make sure that we can deliver on that. Because I think with the amount of money we have available at the end of this year, there's no reason we shouldn't hit that number going forward. We'll see how the utility performs, and also how well we can hold the line on using the electric utility surplus as a means of covering everything that we want to put into the budget. Thank you. Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've been on council now for about five years. I'll be entering my sixth next year. And when I first joined, one of the challenges that the borough faced was its credit rating. You know, we always had our AAA rating, but at that time it was a negative. And one of the sightings that I guess S&amp;P brought out, and our auditors also brought out, was A, our free balance, we were using it up. And B, more funds were going out of the surplus and in. And, you know, at first I questioned that, but then it kind of made sense to me. You know, you don't want to run a bare-bones operation, because if something comes up, you need the funds to address it. And the importance of that AAA rating, which, thank God, we've always had, will pay dividends when we start talking about reinvesting in our, in the joint meeting, in the sewer room, in the sewage treatment plant that we own. That's a major investment. Going back to that time, and, you know, then moving forward, you know, we had debt service. You know, when I look at the fields that we play on, which we all treasure, the MRC fields, but that was an expense. We've had many votes, all unanimous, to hire additional police officers. We've ratified raises to different employees, all been unanimous. We've all been unanimous in the money we're spending on the infrastructure, you know? Well, how are you going to pay for it? You're either going to whack the residents with an increase in their taxes, or you're going to mine the shop, so to speak. And we did. We kept the rates flat. We've not charged the residents anymore in the electric rates. But with prudent work and hard work, we've managed to get a lot of the work done. What I will tell you is this free balance number, in my opinion, is low. I've had the job of working with and negotiating with FEMA over the storms that we've had in the past, and some have said, oh, you know, oh, you know, look, it was only this much money. They laughed at it. Well, right after I became OEM coordinator, I negotiated $70,000 just from Hurricane Floyd, and the cost of the borough was much greater than that. Because the number that I get back only represents 75% of what the government recognizes in a certain time period. Then came Hurricane Irene. Then came Snowtober. Then came Hurricane Sandy. And the best example I can give you was this past blizzard of last year. I just finished negotiating with FEMA to get the borough back $60,000. That storm alone, which was a two-day storm, cost the borough in excess of $110,000, most of it in overtime money. So any major storm is a major impact on the budget of this borough. So I like the way this is structured. It gives us the flexibility, as Councilwoman Bailey said, this is a municipality, there's a lot of moving parts. You have to be able to address those. If a water main breaks, if a road breaks, you have to have the money to address it. If another storm hits, we need the money to take care of it. Many municipalities during the Hurricane Sandy and Irene, they had to bond to fix their towns, to address the problems. We didn't have to do that. We had the money to take care of it. So while I like this ordinance the way it is, it has the flexibility that we need. There are some parts of it that I'm not overjoyed with, but I will live with. And I hope that I'm wrong about the $1 million, but I really don't think that's enough. Thank you, Mayor.
Armella?
I guess I want to just put my two cents in here. I've been listening to a lot of conversation over this utility rate. And the one thing I learned after being liaison to utilities, that it is a well-run department right now. We have always felt that it should be a business, absolutely, positively. But there's a lot that we have to look forward to. Just starting this next year with smart meters, the handhelds are going to be used. We have to talk about self-generation. There's a lot coming on. We should be talking about solar. We should be talking to the Environmental Commission and trying to get the word out there, how to conserve electricity in each one of our homes. I'm a person that shuts lights off, so I don't have a problem with my utility bill, because I do that every place I go. But I think what I'm concerned about is the same things that you said, Rob. You know, there are people that need this, and I think Mr. Henderson also said this. There are people who need some type of reduction, and I'm willing to give that. But we have to be careful what we do because of the future councils that are going to have to deal with this later on. So I think this ordinance was done very good. I think that it gives us the flexibility. We can change it. And I think we have to give something a try. We've been talking about this. So this is the first example of actually doing something to get something done. So we have to give it a try. We have the op, we have the ability to later on learn from our mistakes that maybe we'll make and do a resolution and amend this ordinance. So, you know, I'm just saying, I think we need to give this a chance. There was a lot of work that went into this. I mean, we've talked about this, I guess, about three years now, straight. So, of course, I'm going to vote for this. And give it a chance, I think, at this point. I think it's a very simple solution. We've got to start someplace, and I think that this is a good start.
And I would echo what everything has been said, that I think it's a good vehicle to return some money back to our rate payers and gives us flexibility and... return some money back to our ratepayers and gives us flexibility and a little insurance for the future. And just to, I want to add to Ben's little history story of Harold Higgs, who did, through the borough, trying to say the borough can't use surplus to support the operations. But the best part of my story, or Harold Higgs's story, is when he lost the lawsuit, he came back to his council at that time and said, "You should start transferring more money. You're not doing enough." So, he lost, but then took a new battle. So, all right, Ben, and then Rob, and I think we're probably ready for votes.
Yeah, I just have a quick comment about the electric utility. And when I was listening to Councilwoman Vitale, it occurred to me, if in any way we've left the impression that we're criticizing the operation of the electric utility, let's take that off the table immediately. They do a fine job. The financial aspects of it is our job, but insofar as keeping that going, in effect, keeping the lights on, they are a first-rate operation. I just wanted to...
And we're very lucky.
Yes.
You're here, I see. So, just as it pertains to free balance, because I was actually on the phone with S&amp;P when we called them to find out what was going on, they weren't talking about the free balance in the electric utility. They were talking about the overall surplus position of Madison. And as you all recall, we had enjoyed wonderful surpluses until we locked in to the five-year fixed-rate electric utility contract at pretty much close to the all-time highs in Having worked on trading floors for 25 years, someone always does that, so you can't, we're not going to critique that, but I think if you use, but what happened then was because we had so much borrowing in the period, in the few years preceding us, the spike in electric rates when we locked in for five years, that we could no longer rely on the electric utility surplus to fund everything we wanted to do. So really, in my heart, it's that that drives me to push so hard for a cut because it's happened before, where we were so reliant on one source of revenue to fund ourselves that things got really very bad, quickly. You remember, Bob, we were on council, it was, you know, those 11 and 12 budgets were tough. Remember, right? So, you know, I don't think that, and also, you know, we did a wonderful job with the storms, but at the time the storms hit, the electric utility surplus was 50% of what it is now. And we were using a lot of that in the budget. So, you know, really what drives me to be so, such a pain in the neck about this, I'm not going to use the word passionate, because I hate it when people say that. I'll admit I'm a nudge, okay, about this, is that we've seen what happens when we become overly reliant on the electric utility surplus. And again, I'm going to repeat that, the next strategic plan, I think that the council should do, would be to figure out how we're going, what we're going to do when rates go up by 50%, which isn't hard to believe, because we were paying 50% more per contract just a year and a half ago, right? So it's not out of the realm to think that they're going to go up, because getting yourself so exposed to a particular source of funding, when that funding is so cheap, okay, and then when it gets expensive, it can cause problems. And it's always the cash flow that brings people down, right? And that's all, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Are we ready for roll call vote?
All right.
Mr. Catalinello?
No.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 65-2016 adopted and finally passed, and I ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. We are now on to the second of two invitations for discussion. This is when you may speak on any topic. And please step up to lectern, state your name, your address, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Anyone wishing to be heard? Come on up.
I just want to write, speak for the record, I hope the Madison Eagle publishes this, that the Madison residents are paying 19.29 cents per kilowatt hour, and Drew is paying 11.29 cents per kilowatt hour. Even if you charge a 20% surcharge for commercial rates, still well south of what Madison residents are paying for electricity.
If you, I know you stated your name and address before, but you have to do that again.
My name is Ron Hendrickson, and I live at 119 Green Avenue.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Introduction ordinance. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for December 12, 2016. It will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance 64-2016 for the first reading. I ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance 66, 2016, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $30,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for Police Firing Range Improvements.
Mayor, I'll move ordinance 66-2016.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote?
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale? Yes.
Ms. Bailey? Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
I move Resolution 322, 322-2016 through Resolution 332-2016.
Second.
Any discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call vote?
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers.
Public safety, $15,235.90. Health and public assistance, $4,336.06. Public works and engineering, $170,820.58. Community affairs, $13,356.53. Finance and borough clerk, $282,349.68. Utilities, $62,980.59. The total is $549,079.34.
I move the vouchers?
Second. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
There is no new business?
With that, I move adjourn.
All favor. All right.
There's only one more meeting. And it's the 16th. No, it's not the 16th. The 12th. 12th or 13th, whether you're... I think I'll be all right.
December...
12th. 12th. ELO, discovered ELO. He had like five big rooms.